Now, copy that. Now, we will start the prayer. Amen. We will pray for God and bless him. Today, we will pray for God and bless him. In this prayer, we will pray for him to be with us. We will pray for him to be with us. We will pray for him to be with us. We will pray for him to be with us. We will pray for him to be with us. We will pray for him to be with us. We will pray for him to be with us. We will pray for him to be with us. We will pray for him to be with us. We will pray for him to be with us. We will pray for him to be with us. We will pray for him to be with us. We will pray for him to be with us. Amen. Now, we will pray for two verses. Sotiram Yesunada, I will pray for you. Let me read it.
(Singing) (Music)
Today, we will pray for God. Today, we will pray for God. So, Joseph, your brother, your brother, your sister, our brother, Johnny, our brother, our brother, our brother, now, we will pray for God. Thank you brothers and for giving consent to share the word. And now, to over to Brother Joe.
Yeah, I praise God that God has given me privilege to talk to the brothers and sisters in Tanjaor and Belafonte.
In our Tanjaor, in the midst of the wilderness, we will pray for God and bless him.
The burden that I have in my heart is is that our life has to become more and more glorious as the days go by.
If you have a bad habit, you should not let your family talk about it.
Therefore, it is a good question for us to ask whether it is becoming more and more glorious or is it, are we backsliding or are we becoming more and more glorious in our individual personal lives and in our family and church lives?
If you have a bad habit, you should not let your family talk about it. Or do you think that your family is separated, your family is separated? Or do you think that you have left it?
And for this, I want to, I want to show this verse in Isaiah sixty, sixty verse thirteen.
In that verse, I am seventy-one. I am fifty-one.
Verse thirteen, one, one, three.
In that verse, I am seventy-one.
Yeah, read it. It says there in the last part, it says, "I shall make the place of my feet glorious."
(Singing) (Music)
This is an amazing promise that all of us can claim and believe.
Do you think that you should have a good memory?
Don't forget this.
You will never forget it.
Lord, you have said that you will make, you will make that place glorious if in that place your feet is there.
If you have a bad habit, you should not let your family talk about it.
So then, we can, we can claim that promise and say that, Lord, this is wonderful, this is amazing.
We will tell that you have a good memory.
So beloved brothers and sisters, think of that, your own personal lives.
We will tell that you have a good memory.
That God can make your personal hidden life glorious if you allow the feet of the Lord rest in your personal life.
If you allow the feet of the Lord rest in your personal life, would it change your family?
But many a time, whether we allow the Lord to keep his feet on our lives.
But we should allow the Lord to keep his feet on our lives.
That is the challenging question that the Lord is asking me.
I will ask the question of the Lord.
So today, I would like to share how to ensure that his feet is staying in our personal lives, in our families and in our churches.
If you have a bad habit, you should not let your family talk about it.
Because he will make that place glorious without a shadow of doubt.
If you have a bad habit,
I shall make the place of my feet glorious.
I shall make the place of my feet glorious.
Lord, how can I make sure that myself, my life becomes glorious by having your feet in my heart, in my life, every area of my life?
If you have a bad habit, would it change your family?
First of all, I want to say that if there is any sin, conscious sin in your life which you are not repenting about, then God's feet will not come there.
If you have a bad habit, would it change your family?
God wants to keep his feet there, but then God cannot do that.
If you have a bad habit,
because there is sin in your life and you are not willing to face up to that and change your ways.
If you have a bad habit,
By putting a poster in your house that wherever your feet is there will become glorious, you know, we cannot ensure that there will be glory.
If you have a bad habit,
It is just like, you know, people say, Christ is unseen guest or unseen host in our home.
If you have a bad habit,
That doesn't mean that the Lord is the host there or the guest there.
If you have a bad habit,
For example, look at this beautiful verse in John chapter three, verse twenty.
For example, John three, verse twenty.
What does it say? Very simple word.
It is a very simple word.
Everyone who does evil hates the light and does not come to the light lest his deeds be exposed.
If you have a bad habit,
He doesn't want to come to the light because his sin will be exposed.
If you have a bad habit,
Doesn't want to come to the presence of the Lord.
If you have a bad habit,
And does not want to come, for example, does not want to come in fellowship with other godly brothers.
If you have a bad habit,
And why?
Why?
What is the reason for that?
Why?
It says, "Everyone who does evil hates the light."
If you have a bad habit,
He does not come to fellowship.
If you have a bad habit,
He cannot come to fellowship.
If you have a bad habit,
Because he does not love the light.
If you have a bad habit,
Why he does not love the light?
If you have a bad habit,
Because there is some sin in his life which he is not willing to give up.
If you have a bad habit,
I am not talking about you slip up or you, you know, you fall in this sin and suddenly you repent about it and you, you confess that, you apologize and, you know, repent and come back. I am not talking about that.
If you have a bad habit,
I am not talking about that.
I am not talking about that.
I am talking about beloved brother, beloved sister, is there any sin in your life which you are not willing to give up?
If you have a bad habit,
You are not willing to come, you are not willing to leave that sin and come to that light and then how can the Lord keep his feet in your life?
If you have a bad habit, would it change your family?
Can you leave your cellphone carelessly in your table?
If you have a bad habit,
Anybody can look at it.
If you have a bad habit,
Or are you very careful that nobody should touch my cellphone?
If you have a bad habit,
You know, I am just telling an example.
Give an example.
Of course, if there are certain documents or something which you do not want children to meddle with it and, you know, erase it by mistake or delete it, then that is alright, that is a good reason.
If you have a bad habit,
But on the other hand, you are very, very careful that nobody should, nobody should look into that and because lest they see where all I usually go and visit in that site or whatever.
If you have a bad habit,
Or they will, or they will, others will see the chats that I have.
If you have a bad habit,
Or you are scared that somebody will see the WhatsApp conversations or the big pictures that I have.
If you have a bad habit,
Then you are not in the light, my dear brother, my dear sister.
If you have a bad habit,
And how can you expect your life to become glorious because the feet of the Lord will never be anywhere near in your life?
If you have a bad habit,
It will never come anywhere.
It will never come anywhere.
Now, I want to, I want to, I want to show this verse in, in Proverbs chapter four, verse twenty-three.
I am seventy-one.
All of us know these things, I am only just reminding you these things.
If you have a bad habit,
I am not telling you anything new today.
If you have a bad habit,
Chapter four, verse twenty-three.
I am seventy-one.
Watch over your heart with all diligence.
Brother? If you have a bad habit,
From, from it flows the springs of life.
If you have a bad habit,
Yeah, in Tamil, it says springs of life and in English also it says, but I think in King James Version, it says, "From it starts all the issues of life."
If you have a bad habit,
All the problems in life starts from the heart.
If you have a bad habit,
Watch over your heart with all diligence.
If you have a bad habit,
What are the thoughts that you have in your spirit?
If you have a bad habit,
Find that from the heart it all comes.
If you have a bad habit,
It is not that we are here to say that, you know, sometimes when we hear certain messages, we may think that, okay, from now onwards, I will not do this, I will not do this, I will not do this, I will not do this.
If you have a bad habit,
Say, okay, brother, from now on, from today onwards, I will take this decision, I will not do this, I will not do this, I will not do this.
If you have a bad habit,
So you say like that.
If you have a bad habit,
That is only cutting the fruits.
If you have a bad habit,
That is not dealing with that, with the roots.
If you have a bad habit,
And when you do not deal with the roots, that means your heart or your spirit, you find that the fruits will keep on coming again and again.
If you have a bad habit,
It is, it is, it is only a matter of time, again, it will come back.
If you have a bad habit,
The same fruit will come back.
If you have a bad habit,
And then you say, Lord, I have prayed, I have fasted and I have taken the decision and determination, oh, I am very weak, I have no willpower, all that you may say.
If you have a bad habit,
Or I have no Holy Spirit.
If you have a bad habit,
All those things, that is not the reason, my dear brother, my dear sister.
If you have a bad habit,
The reason is your heart, your spirit.
If you have a bad habit,
Till Jesus Christ came, nobody could do anything about the heart or the root.
If you have a bad habit,
The Old Testament, we don't find anybody dealing with the root.
If you have a bad habit,
This is the part of the prophecy with John the Baptist made about Jesus Christ.
If you have a bad habit,
That he will take care of the root.
If you have a bad habit,
And when you deal with the root,
If you have a bad habit,
Then all our external things will become alright automatically.
If you have a bad habit,
But because the root is not right, you find that the bad fruits are keep on coming.
If you have a bad habit,
You know, many a time when, when certain situations happen, when we, when we react in an ungodly way, unfortunately, we say, it is because of the other person, because of the circumstances that it happened.
If you have a bad habit,
My children misbehaved and therefore I lost my temper.
If you have a bad habit,
Or they say that because my wife did like this and therefore I did like that.
If you have a bad habit,
You know, that is what usually we say.
If you have a bad habit,
Jesus Christ said, "Nothing outside can defile a person."
If you have a bad habit,
It cannot, I hope all of us know that verse in Mark chapter seven, verse fifteen, it says, "Nothing from outside can defile a person."
If you have a bad habit,
Nothing will, nothing will pollute you, dear brother, dear sister.
If you have a bad habit,
Something may happen from outside.
If you have a bad habit,
But then, how my heart responds to that, that is going to decide your reaction.
If you have a bad habit,
Your heart may respond in a particular way through the tongue.
If you have a bad habit,
Or maybe through your eyes, some type of response is being given.
If you have a bad habit,
Or with your hand, there may be a response.
If you have a bad habit,
Something, usually it is through our tongue and through our eyes, we find that there is some type of response is given based on what happens in your heart in that particular situation.
If you have a bad habit,
We can, we can look at the family lives in, in Malachi chapter two.
If you have a bad habit,
Malachi chapter two, verse fifteen and sixteen.
If you have a bad habit,
It says here, "Take heed then to your spirit and let no one deal treacherously against the wife of your youth."
If you have a bad habit,
Again, see that, dear brothers, dear, dear brothers, see that verse there, the last part of verse fifteen. Take heed then to your spirit.
If you have a bad habit,
Your spirit, you, you, you had to be very careful about your spirit.
If you have a bad habit,
You have got a despising attitude in your spirit to your wife.
If you have a bad habit,
Or you have a critical spirit, critical attitude towards your spirit, towards your wife.
If you have a bad habit,
Be careful of your spirit.
If you have a bad habit,
Or you want to compare your wife with another woman.
If you have a bad habit,
Oh, her cooking is better or she is like that or she keeps the house like that, I went to that house or I went to that house or accessories like that. Oh, she makes the same curry but in the same dish but very beautiful way.
If you have a bad habit,
Spirit, make sure that you are, you don't deal treacherously with the, with the, with the wife of your youth.
If you have a bad habit,
In your spirit, be careful about your spirit.
If you have a bad habit,
Because the Lord says, "I want to keep my feet in your home."
If you have a bad habit,
And I want to make your family life, your home a glorious place.
If you have a bad habit,
Is there a, is there a still some unforgiveness or you have a, you have some bitter attitude towards your wife? Still, dear brother, dear brothers.
If you have a bad habit,
Definitely in every home, there will be situations where wife makes some mistakes or husband makes some mistakes.
If you have a bad habit,
We are not in heaven, we are on this earth.
If you have a bad habit,
And therefore, wife will definitely make mistakes and husband will definitely make mistakes.
If you have a bad habit,
But what is our, what is, how, how does our heart respond to that?
If you have a bad habit,
That is the most important thing.
That is very important.
How does your heart respond to that?
If you have a bad habit,
Immediately, you say, okay, a despising reaction comes.
If you have a bad habit,
Or a complaining attitude comes.
If you have a bad habit,
Or a bitter attitude towards the wife.
If you have a bad habit,
That is the thing that you had to be vigilant about.
If you have a bad habit,
Always be alert.
If you have a bad habit,
Small, 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 small things happen and suddenly it becomes something like a big volcano eruption.
If you have a bad habit,
But when the small things happen, settle it immediately.
If you have a bad habit,
He settled immediately.
If you have a bad habit,
And then it says in verse sixteen, "He hates divorce" and then finally it says in verse sixteen, so again, take heed to your spirit that you do not deal treacherously.
If you have a bad habit,
Oh, you may say, oh brother, why are you talking about divorce here?
If you have a bad habit,
If you, if you do not take heed to your heart, then it will lead to divorce finally, one day.
If you have a bad habit,
And then people have to come together and counsel you and help you and all that, all kinds of things.
If you have a bad habit,
Take heed to your spirit in your family lives, beloved brothers.
If you have a bad habit,
Don't think that it is only for the brothers, that is also for the sisters.
If you have a bad habit,
That do you have a disrespectful attitude towards your husband?
If you have a bad habit,
You know, it says, Peter says that the sister should have a respectful behavior towards, that the sister should have a respectful behavior towards, towards their husbands.
கணவுன்மார்ப்பித் து மரியாதியான ஒரு நடத்தை வேண்டுமென்று பேதுரு சொல்லுகிறார்.
Respectful behavior.
மரியாதியான ஒரு நடத்தை.
Paul also says, have respectful behavior towards your husband.
அவுலும் சொல்லுகிறார், கணவுன்மீது ஒரு மரியாத நடத்தை கொண்டிருக்கவேண்டுமென்று சொல்லி.
This all is a matter of your spirit, my dear brothers and sisters.
அருமைசகோதர், சகோதரிகள், இதெல்லாம் உங்கள் ஆவியைக் குறுத்தே இருக்கு.
Let us talk about, let's, let's, let's see a verse in the church, chapter Hebrews chapter twelve.
இப்பிரேயர் பணிரெண்டா மதிகரத்திலே சபைப்பட்டியவர் வசனத்தை நம் கேட்கோம்.
Hebrews chapter twelve.
இப்பிரேயர் பணிரெண்டு.
Again, all of us know this verse, we have heard this many a time.
நம் பலமுறை இந்த வசனத்தை கேட்டிருக்கின்றோம்.
Uh, twelve, verse fifteen.
பணிரெண்டு, பதினெந்து.
See to it that no one comes short of the grace of God, that no root of bitterness springing up causes trouble and by it many be defined.
ஒருவனும் தேவனுடைய கிருபை இழைந்து போகாதபடிக்கும், யாதொரு கச்சப்பான வேறு முலைத்தெழிந்து கலக்க முட்டாகுதால், அனைகர் கிட்டுபடாதபடிக்கும் என்று சொல்லுகிற.
So remember that, here also talking about bitterness, the root of bitterness, root, we talked about root in the beginning.
இங்கும் கச்சப்பான வேற் என்று சொல்லி, வேறைப்பட்டு சொல்லுகிறது முன்னமே நம் பேசுன மல்லவா?
That means, there is a bitterness in your spirit.
அதற்கு என்ன அத்தமன்றால், உங்கள் ஆவிலே ஒரு கச்சப்பு காணப்படுகிற.
There is a bitterness in your heart.
உங்கள் இருதைத்திலே ஒரு கச்சப்பு காணப்படுகிற.
The root, nobody can see.
அந்த வேறு யாருமே பார்க்கமுடியாது.
You know, the, the, the beauty of the root is that nobody can see.
அந்த வேறோடியே ஒரு ரகசீமன் என்றால், அதை யாருமே பார்க்கமுடியாது.
You can have bitterness in your heart towards another brother and still say praise the Lord and shake your hands or smile well and say praise the Lord.
உங்கள் மனதுருக்குள்ளையில் கச்சப்பை வைத்துவிட்டான், இன்னொரு சகோதரனைப் பார்த்து, பிரேசலாடனு சொல்லாமல் தைகுலுக்கலாம்.
Then you can smile at him.
அவரைபாத்து புண்ணகைக்கலாம்.
And then you can welcome him home, all that you can do.
அவரை வீட்டுக்கு வரவேற்றுத் தெல்லாமே நீங்கள் செய்லாம்.
Because bitterness, nobody can see.
என்னால் கச்சப்பை யாரும் பார்க்கமுடியாது.
But unfortunately, God can see.
ஆனால் துருத்திச்சிரசமாய் தேவன் பற்பர்.
And then God says, I see bitterness in your heart, I am sorry, I cannot come to your home, I cannot come to your life.
அப்போது தேவன் சொல்வார், நான் இந்த கச்சப்பைப் பார்த்துவிட்டேன், வருந்துகிறேன், உன் வீட்டுக்கு வரம்படியாது, உள்ளேயும் வரம்படியாது என்று சொல்லிவிடுவார்.
I see, I sense this, this bitterness.
இந்த கச்சப்பை நான் பார்க்கிறேன், உன்னுருகிறேன்னு சொல்லுவார்.
And, and, and recently only I saw something there, that it talks immediately after discipline.
சவிபத்திலதான் நான் இதைப் பார்த்தேன், அதற்கு அடுத்து உடனடியாகது உழுங்குபட்டிருங்கு பேசுகிறது.
Disciplining in the church.
சபைலே உழுங்குபடுத்துவதைக் குறுத்து பேசுகிறது.
It says, our fathers disciplined us, verse nine.
உண்பதாம் வசனம் பிதானம்மை உழுங்குபடுத்துகின்றா?
Then it says, in verse ten, it says, he disciplined us for our, for our good, so that we may have the holiness of God.
நம்முடைய பர்ஸுத்துத்துக்காக கொஞ்சகால நம்மை சிச்சித்தார் இன்று பத்தாம் வசனம் சொல்லுகிறது.
And therefore do not get discouraged, verse twelve and thirteen.
பணிரெண்டு, பதிமுன்றா வசனங்கள், ஆகவே நீங்கள் சோந்துபோகவேண்டாம் என்று சொல்லப்படுகிறது.
So in the church also when some correction or some discipline comes, do not get discouraged.
ஆகவே சபைலே ஒரு சிச்சே வரும்போதுல, உழுங்கு நடவடிக்கை வரும்போதோ நீங்கள் சோந்துபோகக்கூடா.
Do not get discouraged, dear brother, dear sister.
அருமைசகோதரனே, அருமைசகோதரியே நீங்கள் சோந்துபோகவேண்டாம்.
And then the writer also says, make sure that you do not become bitter towards that particular brothers or particular elders who have initiated that action against you.
இதை ஏயத்து நாக்கியவனும் சொல்லுகிறார், அப்படி உங்களைக் கண்டித்தலை, திருத்தியான்து சகோதரனுக்கு எதிராய், நீங்கள் கச்சப்பும் கள்ளக்கூடாது என்கிறார்.
Do not have, do not have bitterness towards that particular brother.
அந்த குறிப்பிட்ட சகோதரமது கச்சப்புக்குள்ளாது இருக்கு.
Yeah, you will pollute everybody.
அப்படி இவ்வந்தால் எல்லோரையும் தீட்டுபடுத்தி விடுவிருக்கு.
And that is a sign that you have no grace of God.
அதுதான் நீங்கள் கிருபை இழைந்தவரென்பதற்கான நுருபணமாக.
One of the clearest marks of a man who has lost the grace of God is that he is bitter.
தேவ கிருபையேற்று மனிதருடைய திளிவா நடையாலம் என்று மிட்டால், அவன் கச்சப்புள்ள ஒன்னாய் மாறிவிடுகிறார்.
Verse fifteen is very clear.
அதனைத்தா மசனம் மிகத் திளிவா இருக்கு.
See to it that no one comes short of the grace of God, that no root of bitterness springing up.
ஒருவனும் தேவ கிருபை இழைந்து போகாதபடிக்கு, யாதொரு கச்சப்பான வேறு முலைத்தெழிந்து கூடாது என்று சொல்லுகிற.
So both these things go together.
ஆகவே இரண்டு ஒன்றாக செல்லுகிறது.
Lack of the grace of God and the presence of the bitterness.
கிருபைக் குறைவும், கச்சப்பு இருப்பதும்.
It says in James, for example.
உதானத்தை யாக்கோக்கிலே இப்படி சொல்லப்படுகிற.
James chapter three verse fourteen, for example.
யாக்கோபு மூன்று பதினெந்து இப்படி சொல்லுகிறது.
Again, it says about jealousy, jealousy in the heart, verse thirteen, verse fourteen.
பதினாண்கா மசனத்திலே பொராமைப்பட்டிருங்கு சொல்லுகிற.
I think the Tamil translation is not like that.
தமிழ் மொழிபேப்பு அப்படில்லையை நினைக்கின்றேன்.
Uh, how is that brother, Tamil, replay verse fourteen?
உங்கள் இருதைத்திலே கச்சப்பான வைராக்யத்தையும் விருதத்தையும் வைத்திரிலானால், நீங்கள் பெருமே பாராட்டாதுருங்கள்.
சத்யத்திற்கு வரதும் நேர்தலம். English it says, but if you have bitter jealousy and selfish ambition in your heart.
உங்கள் இருதைத்திலே கச்சப்பான பொராமை என்று சொல்ல ஆங்கிலத்திலே சொல்லப்படுகிற.
So then jealousy, do you have jealousy in your heart? Again, again, remember that. You see, God wants to keep this feat and make your life glorious, but God is unable to do that because you have got bitterness, you have got jealousy and you have got, you know, your spirit is not right with one another, your spirit is not right with the husband and wife, all that.
தேவன் நம்முடைய பாதத்தை உங்கள் வாழ்விலே வைத்து, அதை மகிமை புருதுனதா மாற்ற குறும்புகின்றார். ஆனால் உங்கள் மனதிலே பொராமை இருப்பதுனாலும், கச்சப்பு இருப்பதுனாலும், உங்கள் ஆவிகளிலே மாறபடுறபதுனாலும், தேவன் அப்படி செய்ய முடியவில்லை.
God wants, dear brothers, dear sisters, listen to this word.
அருமைசகோதர், சகோதரின் வார்த்தை கொஞ்சம் கவனிங்கள்.
God wants to make your life glorious.
தேவன் உங்கள் வாழ்க்கை மகிமை நிறிந்ததா ஆக்குவிரும்புகிற.
God wants to make your personal life glorious and happy.
உங்கள் தனிப்பட்ட வாழ்வை மகிமை நிறிந்ததாய், சந்தோஷமல்லதாய் ஆக்கும்படி குறும்புகிற.
God wants to make your family life glorious.
உங்கள் புடும்ப வாழ்வு மகிமையென்று ஆக்குவிரும்புகிற.
God wants to make your church life and the fellowship glorious.
உங்கள் சபை வாழ்வு மைக்கியம் மகிமையா இருக்கவேண்டுமென்று தேவன் குறும்புகிற.
But, on the other hand.
ஆனால் மறுபக்க.
On the other hand, you have all these sins which we have, we have seen.
நம் பார்க்க எல்லா பாவம் உங்களுக்குள்ளே இருக்கு.
If, if you have all these sins.
இந்த பாவமல்லாம் இருந்தால்.
Then God cannot keep his feet, feet on your, in your personal life and your family life and church life.
உங்கள் தனிப்பட்ட வாழ்வுலும், புடும்ப வாழ்வுலும், சபை வாழ்வுலும், தேவன் தம்முடைய பாதத்தை வைக்கமுடியாது.
We have all failed.
நம்முள்ளே ஒரு தோட்டுப் போய்தான் இருக்கோம்.
But then, we can repent.
நாம் மனந்துரும்பலா.
We can, we can repent, beloved brothers and sisters.
அருமைசகோதர், சகோதரா மனந்துரும்பலா.
And say, Lord, have mercy on me, I want you to stay with me, Lord. Your feet should be in my, in my, in my life, in my personal life, in my family life, in my church life, in my fellowship, Lord, I want your feet to stay there, Lord.
அண்டவரே நான் மனந்துரும்பரே, அண்டவரே உடைய பாதம் என் புடும்ப வாழ்விலே, என் தனிப்பட்ட வாழ்விலே, சபை வாழ்வு நின்று இல்லைத் தோகவேண்டுமென்று சொல்லினா கேட்கோம்.
I say at fifty-eight, in closing, I want to show a couple of verses.
முடிவாகசல் வசனங்களைக் காண்பிக்கவுண்டு என்று ஏசாய் ஐங்பத்தையேட்டாம் மதிகரம்.
Fifty-eight, verse thirteen.
ஏசாய் ஐங்பத்தையேட்டு பதிமுன்று.
He says, why you have all this?
ஏன் உங்களுக்கு எல்லாம் இருக்கறதென்று சொல்லி கத்தறுங்க.
Why you have a, why you have sin which you cannot give up?
இங்கள் விட்டுவிடமுடியாத பாவம் ஏன் உங்களுக்கு இருக்கறது?
Why all the problems come from the heart?
ஏன் எல்லா பிரச்சனை இருதைத்திலும் வருகிறது?
Why you have a problem in your spirit with your wife?
மனைவியோடுக்குடைய ஆவிலே பிரச்சனை?
Why you have problems with your wife or with one another regarding bitterness and jealousy?[1147.24]
एन कसप्पु मट्रु पोरामय इदुनिमित्तम मणवियोडु मट्रोडु प्रच्छन
You know the reason?
कारणम एन्न
The Lord says three things then.
कत्तर मुण्ड्रु कारिंगले निंगु सोल्लुकर
There's no need to explain, you can just read that.
नम्मलके कोड़े तेवलियाद नाम पटिकलाम अवलवे
Verse thirteen, it says,
पदिमुण्ड्रम वसनम इप्पडिसोल्लुकर
Because of the Sabbath, you turn your foot from doing your own pleasure on my holiday and call the Sabbath a delight and a holiday of the Lord honorable and shall honor it. How, how shall I come to a life of rest?
एप्पडिनानु एलेप्पार्धल्ल वार्वे कुंडुन वरमुडि
How can I ensure that the Lord's feet is in my life and my family life?
इन वार्वलु, पुडुम्बा वार्वलु, एप्पडिदे देवरुडिये पादम तंगीरुकमुडि
How can I honor the Sabbath?
एप्पडियोय वनाले नान गणंबन्नमुडि
In the second part of verse thirteen, it says, and, it says, and shall honor it, you shall honor it by desisting from your own ways, from seeking your own pleasure, from speaking your own words.
इंगु सोल्लपडुकरदु, अप्पडि एप्पडिरुकमुडि मन्नराल, उनक इश्चमानदे सैयाद बडि, उनक इश्चमानदे सैयादे, उन सोंद्ध पेच्चे पेसादे एंडु सोल्लुकर
You are first of all, desisting from your own ways.
उनके इश्चमानदे सैयाद बडि, उन वरिगलिन्बडि नडळादे एंडु सोल्लुकर
And your own pleasure.
उनक इश्चमानदे सैयादे एंडु सोल्लुकर
And from speaking your own words.
उन सोंद्ध पेच्चे पेसादे एंडु सोल्लुकर
Dear Lord, help me, how many of us will pray?
आंडवरे उदयविषय पेन्नु सोल्ले, एत्नेक्या नाम जबिको
Dear Lord, have mercy on me, Lord, I don't want to have my own ways and my own pleasure and my own word from this day.
आंडवर इंदनाल मुदर्कुंडुकत्ताव, इन सोंद्ध वरिवेंडम, इन सोंद्ध पेच्चुमेंडम, इन, इन सोंद्ध इश्चमुमेंदु वेंडम एंडुम सोल्लोमा
Then the feet of the Lord shall be with us.
अप्पोद अकर्त्रोडय पादम नम मधिले तंगीरु
That means, when your, your, your ways come, you say, Lord, I want to break that.
आणत उम्मद वरिगल वरुंबोदु, आंडवरे नान उडळिक्रेण्ड निङल सोल्लीविरुक
Lord, I want to break my way.
इन वरिगलिले नान उडळिक्य वरुम्बुंद्रै
Lord, I want to break my own pleasure.
इन सोंद्ध इश्चत्ते नान उडळिक्य वरुम्बुंद्रै
Lord, I want to break my own word.
इन सोंद्ध वार्ते नान उडळिक्य वरुम्बुंद्रै
I want to have that broken-hearted spirit, Lord.
इंद नुरुंगिनवर इरुजयम, नुरुंगिन आवियनु कुंडुमाट्वरे
You know, what is brokenness?
नुरुंगुदल एंडाल एन्न
People say, people sometimes, you know, I, even I used to think in my teenage days, I used to think in early days of my conversion, I used to think, uh, brokenness means crying and, you know, weeping and, you know, all that, all that.
नान गुडिनुडे वालिब नाटकलिले, मणंदुरुमिनु पुदले योसिपे, नुरुंगुदल एंडाल अर्वुदुम, मणस्थापोदुदुम, अप्पडि एंड्रेसोल्योस्तुरुकर
No, that is not.
अप्पडियल्ल
Breaking means breaking my own way.
नुरुंगुदल एंड्राल, इन सोंद्ध इश्चंगले सैयाद बडि नान नुरुंगुद वरिगले सैयाद बडि
Yeah, your own way, you break that.
अदे, अदे उडळिक्रेण
And then my pleasure, I break that.
इन सोंद्ध इश्चम, अदे नान उडळिकिंद्रै
My own words, I break that.
इन सोंद्ध पेच्चु, अदे नान उडळिकिंद्रै
Then that's all, that is brokenness.
अदा नुरुंगुद
And then when we have brokenness like that.
अप्पडि नुरुंगुदल नम्म कुरुकुंबोदु
Then the Lord will say,
अप्पोद डाक्टर सुल
My feet shall be there.
इन अद पादम इंगु तंगीरुकुमेन्बा
My feet shall be there.
इन अद पादम इंगु तंगीरुकु
And I'll make it glorious in the coming days.
आणा वरुगर नाटकलिले मकिमय निरिंदेदाय मात्सुवेन्डु कत्तर सोल्वा
Will we respond to that?
नाम मुदर्कुंडु सोल्लोमा
Will we respond to that? Lord, I want your way, I want your pleasure, I want your word.
आंडवरे, उम्मद मकिमय आंडवरे नकुंडु, उम्मद वरियनु कुंडु, उम्मद वार्वे नकुंडु
I don't want to have any sin, Lord.
आंडवरे, एंदविदमान पावम इनुकु वेंडम आंडवरे
What which, which, which I am continuing, 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 which I do not want to come to the light.
नान तोरच्या सैदुकुंडे रुकिंद्रै, ओलिकोन नान वर विरुम्बुल्ले
Dear Lord, you see my heart, Lord.
आंडवरे इरुजयतिनिरुकांग्रीर
Oh, you see my spirit, my attitude toward my wife, my husband.
आंडवरे नावियानिरुकांग्रीर, मणविकनवनमीदु रुकिंद्र, मणपाण्मये कांग्रीर
Lord, this unforgiving bitter heart, Lord, you can see.
आंडवरे मण्णिक्कमुडियाद, इरुजयत्तीयु निरुकांग्रीर आंडवरे
About this getting offended and this jealous spirit, this competing spirit, Lord, you can see.
इंद पोरामय पडुर, इंद पोट्टी मणपाण्मय उल्लवर आवियानिरुकांग्रीर आंडवरे
You know, what is the source of competition?
पोट्टीनुडिया मोलम एन्न दरीमा
The source of competition is jealousy.
पोट्टीनुडिया मुलादारम एन्न एंड्राल, पोरामय द
Are we willing to be broken?
नाम नुरुंगुदरुकु मणदा रुकिंद्रोमा
We want the feet of the Lord to rest upon our lives.
कत्तरिन पादम नम वार्वेवन आश्रव्य किंदुम
May the Lord help us, आम
कत्तर मुद्दिविसेवा राग, आम इन
Yes, brother Vincent.
Thank you, brother, for your word. नाम नल्ला वार्ते नाम केटको आणडुडय पादम, इंगे रुकुदांगे उड़िया मकिमय अल्परिता रुकुंडु केटको इविदमान इरण्गलिले, आणडुडय पादम वंद्युरुकुम एंड्रे, नाम केटको मरियाल, लुका पत्ताम अधिकारत्ले कटेसी वसनलिले वासिक्रोम मरियाल आणडुडय पातत्तिले, अमरुंदु, तनिवुट्टे एडळपुडाद, नल्ला पंगित करंदुंडार अर्कड़याल्लम उड़ियुल्ला एलेप्पार्धलाय रुकु अग्नेप्पार्धुल्ला इरत्तले तान आणडवर तुम्मडे पादंगले वाइक्करार मरियाल रुंदा अरैले तान, आणडुडय पादंगले इंदु मात्ताल, उरुवुपल्ला वेलिंगले सिदुकुंडुर्नाल, आणडवरागे यसिकस्त, अंगे पोइत्तुनुडय पातत्तिय वाइथुंदुरुकलाम अंद इरत्तले पोइ रुंदुरुकलाम, मरियाल मात्तालकु उदयसीमुडियाद आणा अंगे मात्तालुडे उल्लत्तिले, ओर पोटी, एन आणडवर अंगे रुकरार, एन मरियाल मट्टा मानुडे पातले रुकवेंडु एनके एन उद्देविसेवले एंडु सोल्ली ओरु कुरै, एल्लाम रुद्दवडिनाले, अंगा आणडुडे पादंगले नम्मडे वार्कले, नाम केटको, करणमाने, अरुलिबलंगले, उरुरु कुरुवर, कसप्पु, अल्लादु पोरामय अल्लादु उरुदमान इरिचल, दृत्यट्ट नलमय, अब्दिन्दाल आणडुडय महिमयीले नान वलरमुडियाद त्रिमानबले अर्मियान ओरु परय पाडल, वरियुर वरियमटुम नाम पड़ो अत्तमल्ल पाडल, नम्मतलिले पड़िरुक्रमुल तेरिले, पाडल बुतोत्तिले एनुत्तिनापत्ति ओरावोद पाडल वरियुर स्टांसमटुम नाम पड़ो पादम उन्रे वेंडुम, इंद पारिल एनक मठ्रेदुम वेंडम पादन उन्रे वेंडुम, ईसु कमल कुंडव आसनय तैलतय आसयुडन, मरि पोसि पनिंद पादम उन्रे वेंडुम, इंद पारिल एनक मठ्रेदुम वेंडम पादम उन्रे वेंडुम अर्मियान बक्तरिया पाडल रीमान्ड, पादम उन्रे वेंडम, इंद पारिल एनक उन्नर मिनट्टु वेंडा देवले नाम नम्मी ओक्कोरुकोमा, आंडवरे, पादम मात्रम वरु कुंडुमानु द प्रसन्न मात्रम रुकुंडुमानु रुड़िया वायतले कत्तावी, इंद मकिमय अधिमाय चुड्डे बोगवेंडुमानु एत्न नाम देवले नाम, अरुरुम अप्पी, वाज्जुवोलु लुप्पोर्सोरुको देवले उड़िया राज, रिंटल मुठ्ट सगोदरिल्कु, तुम्मडे रबीती पर्कु कोडला, उंगल वीडियोवे निलान्मुडि कोडला सगोदरिले, उंगल वीडियोवे निलान्मुडि कोडला, ओरले, co-host निंग अदा आपर, disable पर्नि निंग अदा enable पन्नुडला उंगल कदा, यार कादा, उंगल वीडियो enable पन्नुमुल्ला, निङल chat ले, निंग उंगल पर्यानिंग टाइप पनिना, निंग अदा एडळुरो वेलोरली आराल, चरी, अल्लादु तंजाऊर, अल्लादु इंदले पंगिबट्रिकुडिया, एंद ओर सभयार रुकुदाल नम्मलार वांडुडे, पाद, आणडुडय प्लिलायर रुको, सगोदर सगोदर रुको, मगवे वर इरण्डल, मुण्ड्रु वें, नाम नम्म, नम्मडे नम्बी केयरकेडला निङल unmute पन्नीटे, निङल नम्बी केयरकेड यार मिल्ली एंडाल, नाम देवले जबिकला, उंगल नम्बी केयर निङल जबमाय, निङल जबिकला, देवले एंड्रे ओर मुण्ड्रु, रिंटल, मुण्ड्रु वें, नाम जबिको unmute पन्नीटे निङल जबिंग